We'll call it to order this April the 6th, 2016, meeting of the Franklin County Commissioners. Roll call.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Present.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
You'll all stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Commissioner Harris.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly fathers who come before thy throne of mercy today, we give thanks for all the wonderful blessings that you bestowed upon us as a people, as a nation, and as a county. We ask that you will provide us the knowledge, the courage, and the compassion and the understanding to go forward to do our jobs in the best that we can for our people. These things we say and ask, good thanks for it in thy holy name. Amen.
Takes this to correspondence and organizational business. John?
Just a reminder that Counselor Brown will be out for the next week on vacation.
Good for him. He's been here long enough to have vacation, huh?
Anyone signed up for public comment? That takes us to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda that need to be considered and approved today are Franklin County Commission meeting, March 30th, 2016, claim vouchers in the amount of $404,588.31, and to consider and approve the payroll for the pay period of February the 21st, 2016, through May the 20th, or, excuse me, March the 20th, 2016, in the amount of $1,028,404.15. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So move. Motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Takes us to the items of business. The first item of business will be to receive Ransom Memorial Hospital quarterly update. Matt?
Morning, Commissioner. How are you doing today?
Wonderful.
Good. We actually have a busy day today at Ransom Memorial Hospital. We have, we've been selected as the site for the entire District One Hospital Auxiliary District Meeting, so we've got, I don't know, 70 or so folks that have come into Ottawa to hold their district meeting at Ransom Memorial Hospital. I've got a presentation to give to that board here in a little bit. We also today have our trauma designation survey going on. I know I've talked about this in the past, but we are in pursuit of becoming a trauma center, and that all of our preparation up to this point has culminated with a survey today by the state of Kansas. So that started at 7:00 a.m., and so far, everything is moving along. Other updates, the architecture plans for both the parking lot to the south of the hospital, as well as the emergency department expansion, have been completed, 100% completion, so the design development documents have been handed over to Lloyd Construction, who was awarded the pre-construction process for building the replacement, yeah, the replacement emergency department. Those items will now go out to bid. Lloyd will be responsible for that. He will bring the bids back to the finance committee and hospital board, in which case they will set a guaranteed maximum price. So instead of a design bid build process, this is a GMP process. The hospital board at that point in time will need to make a decision, yea or nay, to definitely move forward with the construction of the emergency department, because they'll have the final numbers back. We don't see any deviation from what the original estimate was, the $7 million to do the emergency department, as well as the parking lot, and replacing the helipad back in the northeast corner of the hospital campus, so I don't think we'll have any surprises there. We do have our groundbreaking ceremony for that on May 18th at 1:30. I don't know if Colt, you or Commissioner Howard are going to speak at that, but we'll be sending invitations out. We have a list of individuals who we'd like to have speak. Kansas Hospital Association will be there. Our elected officials will be there, and so that'll be an exciting day for us as we really get underway with the construction. We were, I recently received a letter from National Hospital Association, so it's the sister organization to the American Hospital Association. It's, as the name says, it's a national group that looks after rural health care in America. And we did not apply for this award, but we were awarded a top 20 community hospital in the nation, the only hospital in Kansas, Missouri, Iowa, and Nebraska in the four state regions. So there is an award ceremony for that in Minneapolis, May 10th through 13th. I've invited our board to come along. If any of you guys have any interest, please let me know, and I will get you the details for it. We are also in the process, to give you an update on the charitable association, Casey Brady is the executive director of that organization. We've got a robust board now, I think, that is moving in the right direction. They're planning their first big event, which is a charity gala, and that will be October 1st, but there'll be more information coming out on that. All of the proceeds for that will go to offset the cost of the emergency department. If you recall, the plan for building the emergency department is to use cash reserves, so continue to stay in the debt-free arena. In the healthcare world, we call this prophylaxis. In this world, I call it preventative, but we, there were some rumors floating around that our emergency room doctors are not covered under the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas Plan. One physician slipped through the cracks and was credentialed with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City instead of Kansas on accident. That has been completely resolved. We've gone back to run a report to see for that physician how many Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas patients he's seen, and our records only indicate one, that person happens to be a county employee, so I wanted to put that to rest. That was something that was, that was put on my radar early this week, and it has been completely resolved. I don't know if I reported this last time, but Lisa Johnson has been employed now as in-house counsel. Last year, we spent a fair amount of money with outside legal counsel. Lisa has both community ties and legal background. She doesn't have the healthcare component of it, but that's something that she can certainly get up to speed on. She's also going to be our corporate compliance officer, and she's going to be in charge of risk management. She started about 45 days ago, and she has certainly brought a backbone for our legal program at the hospital. Those are the main things that I have to present. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question. I also talked to that employee that gave me a call and talked to me about this situation with the emergency room, and I talked with Galen.
Yeah.
Appreciate how quickly it was taken care of.
Yes, we got on it right away. That is, that's bad PR, so (laugh) ransom doesn't take Blue Cross Blue Shield. We don't want that word getting out there, so we tried to address it as quickly as possible.
I know they do, because I've used it more than once.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else have a question for Matt? Go on.
We've got a 40th anniversary over at the ambulance service today, so you gonna have enough parking for everybody?
It's gonna be tight. We might be parking in that field, or the lots there to the south. I'm planning on attending that. That's exciting. Looking forward to it.
Okay, if there's some more questions, appreciate it, Matt.
All right, thank you. Have a great day.
Item number two on the agenda will be to approve rezoning application number 1602-1380 to rezone 37.03 acres from A1 Agriculture Zoning District to an A2 Transitional Agriculture Zoning District, and to rezone approximately 3.01 acres from an A1 Agriculture Zoning District to an R3A Single Family Resident Residential, three acres. Larry's gonna explain it to us.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you've indicated, this is a rezoning request that was submitted by Jeremy Goodman on behalf of his parents, Gerald and Maxine. But the intent here is to divide out three acres with the existing Gerald and Maxine Goodwin's home and some outbuildings. Divide that three acres out, and the remainder of that then would be utilized by Jeremy and his wife for the construction of a new home. We have reviewed this with the planning commission at a public hearing last month. The planning commission has forwarded a recommendation to you for the approval of this request. It does satisfy all of the requirements of our comprehensive plan, in that water meter is presently available at the site for water supply, and they are capable of getting onsite sanitation on that remaining 37 acres. The design of this is somewhat unique. I think there was a survey that was part of your packet that depicts the area where the house and barn and garage structures that would be on the three-acre site, and then the remainder as shown. We did give notice to six surrounding property owners. No one appeared at the public hearing opposed to this, and as I said before, the planning commission has made a recommendation to the county commissioners to adopt a resolution approving the rezoning request.
I have one question just from myself. I understand we've done several of these, when we rezoned from agriculture to residential. What's the transitional agriculture?
It's an, this is in recognition that maybe the parcels are going to be resulting in small enough parcels that they may not be suitable for long-term agricultural use. It's kind of a, an interim type of use that allows for agricultural activities along with a single-family residence, but we recognize that it's probably not something that would be classified as, you know, a long-term agricultural productive area. We have quite a number of these that, where we've always had land divisions that have taken place, and they're less than, the resulting parcels around there are less than 40 acres that are currently zoned A2, which is transitional. Anytime we go less than that 40, if it can't be described as an all-equipped division or fractional division, 40 quarter-quarter section, those go into the A2 zone.
That three acres left, Larry, all the onsite sanitation is within that three acres?
It definitely is. That was the, one thing we're pretty critical on is that they designed that in such a manner as to ensure that the sanitation facilities are encompassed within the boundaries of the newly created parcel.
Is there a setback for like the lateral field?
Yes, any portion of that lateral field has to be 25 feet from a property line.
Anyone else have any questions regarding this? Pretty straightforward. If not, I'd look for a motion to approve the rezoning application number 1602-1380.
Make a motion.
Are motions are a second?
Second.
Motion is a second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
That takes us to the third item on the agenda. It is consider awarding the Jackson Road Bridge replacement project to Brian Olmeyer Construction in the amount of $168,582.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Jim.
Board of County Commissioners approved applying for an off-system bridge project, and we were successful. The application was for the Jackson Road Bridge Project just east of Indiana Road. We opened six bids in Janet's office on March 31st, Thursday, and the bid Brian Olmeyer Construction was the lowest responsible bid. KDOT will fund $120,000 of the total eligible project cost. The request is a motion awarding the Jackson Road Bridge Project to Brian Olmeyer Construction in the amount of $168,582. Engineer's estimate was $245,000 and change.
Did they give any idea when they're gonna start on that thing?
Nope.
Miami County, is that right?
Yes, they're from Paola.
You've said they have done some other projects in Franklin County.
This will be their third, third bridge in Franklin County since I've been here.
Third bridge. Okay. The other questions, we've been talking about this bridge for quite a while, getting started on it. Everybody have a question? If not, would look for a motion to approve Brian Olmeyer for the Jackson Road Bridge replacement project in the amount of $168,582. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's a second. Janet?
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, next item, Jim's gonna stay up here with us. It's consider awarding tire bid number one to Heartland Tire and Treads, bid number two, three, and four to GCR Truck and Tire Centers, and bid number five to Cross Midwest Tire.
Board of County Commissioners approved soliciting bids for tires at your March 23rd meeting. Five fax bids were received, and the request is a motion awarding tire bid number one to Heartland Tire and Treads, bids two, three, and four to GCR, and bid number five to Cross Midwest.
Seems kind of interesting to me that like one company couldn't get
Yeah.
... lower on all the tires, except the way it's split up here.
Being dealers, sometimes they don't handle the tires that we're bidding. Some, but not all.
Guess that's a good thing about doing business with several others, several companies too. Any questions on this?
Pretty straightforward.
If not, would look for a motion to approve the tire bids as stated?
Make a motion to approve this.
Have a motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion's a second. Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
The next item also Jim's gonna talk to us about is consider awarding asphalt patching to Kelo Construction in the estimated amount of $56,668.50.
The department furnished nine locations. The department is not equipped to repair to Kelo, to estimate the cost. Company inspected, measured, and estimated the cost of repairs, which has been attached to your cover sheet. The request is a motion awarding asphalt patching to Kelo Construction in the estimated amount $56,668.50.
Is this mostly roads that are getting prepared to be chipped and sealed, or is there some other?
They're scattered across the county.
Besides that?
The list was furnished as part of the cover sheet.
Doesn't, go ahead, we'll go with this, and then I'll ask you later.
Okay.
Jim, is that price per ton, has it gone down? Any, with the price of oil going down so far?
This is a total cost for labor equipment and materials, and so it's difficult to determine what the prices for the actual asphalt is.
Is that a unit price of $128.50?
I don't, I don't recall doing so.
Just asking.
That price is, is higher than what we've paid in the past for patching, probably reflecting the additional equipment that was needed. They're gonna, they're gonna mill it out and subsequently lay asphalt in the resulting patch, stack sides in the bottom.
Let's not put out bids on this.
No.
Isn't the reason, I mean, I think we discussed this before, is that because of the mobilization or thing, is that wound up, I mean, Kelo being right here in the county wound up
It would be, in my opinion, it would be difficult from somebody from Lyon County or Douglas County
And I remember
To be competitive.
We've had this discussion before, I believe.
With the weather we're having, it'd be difficult to keep the mix hot.
I assume the areas that will be, uh, chipped and sealed would be done first, or at least ahead of the chipping seal, if at all.
I believe these patches will be done starting this week, if it's approved.
And though too, doesn't, as I recall, I mean Vance Brothers have probably already driven the route and understand what's going on, but if they've got, if they've got any areas that they think needs further attention, they make a list of those and they provide those so that they can be patched prior to
We would make the list.
Okay.
Vance Brothers, I don't imagine would be willing to take that responsibility.
They can probably point out to you some places that you might want to look at, though.
Yes, they could.
Yes.
Any else have a question? If not, we can look for a motion to approve awarding the asphalt patching to Kelo Construction in a estimated amount of $56,668.50. Motion?
So move.
Have a motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion's a second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Takes us to staff reports. John?
Good morning, Commissioners. Couple things is number one, as far as the bonding issuance, the public notifications have been made. Thank you, Janet. And then also, so that means that we are in the 60-day comment period, where anybody from the community, if they have, have a comment or protest, they can bring it to our attention. Second thing is just a reminder is that April 14th is the SEK Southeast Kansas Regional Officials Meeting, so just keep that on, on your calendars. And also, again, by way of reminder, April 27th is the date that we are planning for the strategic planning session for the commissioners for the board to talk about just goal-setting for the upcoming year and some things like that, so just mark that on your calendars as well. Other than that, we are moving forward with the budget. Most of the budgets for the 2017 requested budgets have been returned to me, and I'm starting to work through those, and we will be scheduling with the department heads here in the next week or two to be getting those to discuss their line item budgets and budget requests with them, and so we're, we're moving ahead with that. So there was some movement on the tax-led levy, or tax levy-led. I believe that I sent that
Yep.
... update to you from KAC. So right now that the legislature is in recess, but it looks like there's been some, some negotiations and constellations given both ways on a few things, so which in the end helps us out. So we'll just keep an eye on that and kind of see what happens, so.
It's still gonna be, I think it's still one of the, if you go in and look at, as you probably have, is that it's gonna be moved up to implementation date, not to this year, but probably what they will settle on is will be July of next year instead of the initial 2018 implementation date, unless they, yeah.
Yes, it will be, come, it looks like it become effective for January 1st, 2017, so we'll be having to look at it as part of this upcoming budget.
And you mentioned the Southeast Kansas Officials Meeting, is that, do we have yet, and I know you guys are working on it, but the schedule of events, not, not necessarily an agenda, but something that shows who's doing what, when, and where, and all that kind of stuff, so that we, I mean, have, we'll have that like by next Wednesday or before?
Joy has a brochure in the office that we're gonna pass out at the beginning, so that has what, what the times for the things are, so 8:30 to 9:30 is check-in. As soon as everyone convenes at their space from night, around 9:30 to 11:30 would be your time to meet with your groups, and then 11:30 would be lunchtime, so. And then she has some other little things added in there, like, you know, the, we're having a small group come sing from the high school, and so they're gonna be like singing the National Anthem and a few other things, so those are in a brochure that she has. She is waiting for a few more things for details to
So there's not one great big meeting where there's a welcome, each person, each group will have their own, where the clerk or the chair of the commission or the regis, they, in their group welcomes them to the, to the meeting and thanks them for attending and that kind of thing, and
Well, you do that in your own group.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right, but there's not really ever an agenda, well, in my portion of the meeting that I usually attend, there's not ever an agenda for that portion of the meeting. It's just whatever, left up to whatever that respective leader wants to do in their group, so.
And we do have Randall Allen coming for sure.
Yep.
And he's gonna be with us, correct?
Yep, he's gonna be with the Commissioners. All the way up to lunchtime? Yep. That fills that time slot. You do the welcome, I do the invocation, we eat, we go home.
Randall, between the eating and
Yeah, 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 yeah. The last thing that I would, I want to discuss real quick is that I have been in contact with the Department of Kansas Department of Transportation. As the commission will remember, the county received grant funding through the Transportation Enhancement Grant Program from the Kansas Department of Transportation, a sizable amount to build the Visitors Information Center. And as part of that, in the agreement for that, part of the agreement says is that the county will take on responsibility for maintaining this and to use it for the purpose that the dollars were granted for, and so on and so forth, and that funding will be allotted for that at the county's expense to maintain that and continue to operate that. That being the case, there's questions that both Derek and I have about what is our obligation? I am not, I'm uncomfortable recommending that we just unilaterally close that without having a conversation with the Department of Transportation about what we can, whether we can do that or not. Explain to them our concerns at this time, the continuing decreasing number of people that are coming into it, and so on and so forth. And so, given that we're moving forward to get, with getting the request for proposals together, Derek and I both kind of, we both agree that we need to have that conversation with the state first before we put this out, because that will help guide us of what the end result will be, determination for that building. I can't imagine, though, that they would say, think that it would exist into perpetuity. I mean, there's gotta be a lifespan for the period, a period of time for which the grant funds were granted, that they have an expectation of it being in existence for X amount of years.
Yes and no, and this is just going off of what I've seen with other transportation enhancement grant funds, is that, an example would be if a, transportation enhancement grant funds can also be used for bike trails, walking trails, things like that. In those, it talks about that, you know, whatever municipality or, or organization receives those will be responsible for maintaining it into perpetuity, the snow removal and replacing it and things like that. So that is a little different than this, but it's also something that I'm concerned about. And so, before we do anything, I want to have those conversations with the state and I, and the individual that is overseeing that, he's got all the information, he's going back and dragging those, the agreement out, the original grant proposal and all of that, and reviewing that, and I'm meeting with him in a couple weeks, both Derek and I are meeting with him in a couple weeks to go over that. Because I, I agree with you, Commissioner Harris, is that I don't think that they expect us to continue to operate something if we're, if it's not, if we're losing money, or if it's a losing proposition. Not to say that the Visitors Information Center is, it's just the demographic and, and things have changed. And so, looking at that, we have, have concerns, and so express that to them, and, and who knows what they'll come back with, whether they say, I don't have any idea. They'll take it back, they give it to us, we can use it for something else, we can liquidate it, who knows?
They themselves have closed several, haven't they?
Yeah, yes, they have.
Yeah, yes, they have.
And did that come up during your?
Yeah, and I, I did mention that to him, I said, you, you guys, you know, you're doing that yourselves, and, and he acknowledged that, so.
Yeah.
So as soon as I have that conversation, we'll be able to know more and be able to come back and report to you.
It sounds like it's a lot easier to get consent from them now, just have them tell us what they want done with it than, than to fight them later.
Right, well, and my thing is, is I don't want any surprises that, oh, we closed it, and then they come back and say, hey, you owe us seven hundred thousand dollars, or whatever it is, I'd rather have that conversation on the front.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but either way, I, I wanted to let you know about that, just in case there was any questions about why the RFP is kind of being delayed at this time.
There's another issue there, you may want to look into, and I'm not that familiar with it, but I think that Ottawa is designated as a tribal information center statewide as one of their official ones, and that perhaps if, if we change locations from that building to somewhere else, we would lose that distinction, and whether or not that's an important thing or not, I don't know anyway, but.
Okay.
I was informed that there is something there about a designated tribal information center in Ottawa, so people are traveling from other states or whatever, they know where they're at, we are one of the official ones.
Okay. And you talked about the budget, not, the budget wrap-up that we did last week, they did a really good job, but you had, we had indicated that you were gonna get with the sheriff to have him come here and talk to us, because on that budget, the three that he's got responsibility for, there were thirty-seven different line items, as I went back and counted them, that were over to almost better than fifty-seven thousand dollars, and you were gonna discuss that with him, and he was gonna come here, I thought?
I have reached out to him and asked him when a time would be that he would be able to do that, and at this time, I've, I've received no response from him on, on that, on that question and request.
Well, I, I still, well, for me, I don't, I can't speak for the rest of the Commission, I think we had a consensus the other day when we were speaking about it, that we had an interest in hearing from the sheriff in regards to the situation with two out of the three budgets that were, were over, I mean, and the jail was the only one that was going to have carryover, and it was, it was at ninety-nine percent of budget, it was almost at a hundred, hundred percent.
And, and I did express to him very clearly what you were wanting, to discuss the 2015 budget expenditures in more detail with him, so he, he...
He knows, it's not, it wasn't lost in the mail.
Yeah. So I will touch base with him again and see if we can get something nailed down.
And probably can't speak to you about this, but maybe the undersheriff, is that it's been in the news quite a lot lately, just recently, about the, the status of health care within correctional facilities, specifically jails, and advanced correctional health is really on the, the hot seat about that. Is our provider doing the things from your viewpoint that they need, need to do for our inmates and providing the necessary health care and the diagnoses that, because I'd hate to see us highlighted the way some of these other correctional facilities have been, where they've actually had inmates that were incorrectly diagnosed or just even not even taken care of and passed away because of the lack of health care being provided to them. Okay.
Ricky, have anything else to share with us from the Sheriff Department? Jim? Janet?
The Pomona election was yesterday evening, and we got all the results reported and distributed to the news outlets, as I previously asked you guys to put it on your calendar for next Monday for the canvas. We're probably only gonna need like fifteen, twenty-minute stops, we've got three provisionals. That's pretty much all we review is the provisionals, I sent a experienced team from Ottawa out there that works on my larger polling places in Ottawa out there to work this election, just due, due to some things that have happened in the past, and so I feel very confident that everything is, is in order and we'll be able to get through the canvas really quick, so that'll be Monday morning, and we, you can do eight-thirty or nine, whatever you guys' preference is, and I just need to know if anybody's not gonna be able to be there, so I make sure to get somebody in.
Monday, this coming Monday?
We don't have a...
You don't have a study session, no?
Eight-thirty to nine?
Earlier the better for me, but I don't care.
Eight, I'm fine with eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty?
I mean, if eight works, if eight works for you guys, I mean, I don't, I don't care, I gotta be at work at eight, so.
I, I, I can go, I can go with the flow, I can go, I can go at seven o'clock if you want to.
I know Roy doesn't tend to like to go extremely early.
Eight-thirty for a night.
Roy says eight-thirty.
But all right, I'd like to get to work, but...
Yeah.
Commissioner Howard, I had one last thing, one last thing when you're ready.
Yeah?
I'm all done.
You're done? Okay.
Just to follow up with some previous conversations, is that the FCDC meeting was yesterday morning, and with the Executive Committee for FCDC, and we did talk at length about the cash reserve and the concern, and kind of expressed that concern to the, the Executive Board about the cash reserve and where that is built up, and we are, as the Executive Board, we are going to be moving forward with putting together a, a five-year plan on what we plan to be using, the, the cash reserve that is, is mandated through the contract, what we will be using that for over the, for the next five years. Coupled to that is, is that I also had a two-hour meeting yesterday afternoon with the city of Ottawa, and then also Franklin County, and then the, the engineering firm Bartlett and West, who's doing the master planning and everything for the, the industrial park, and we started having the conversation about the doing the marketing and where that is going, and, and understand that that is going to be something as far as starting to put up a website and some other things, starting to get the word out there of what we're doing and, and the availability of land and that sort of thing. And so it is my expectation, and we talked about at that point, that FCDC will be stepping forward with the funding to take care of the marketing, and so we discussed that at length with them, so just be aware of, of that, kind of moving forward on, on that front, so that's all I had on that.
Same, same note, John. There were many people at that meeting last week, last Thursday?
A few of the landowners, a few of the landowners, and they had some comments and stuff on a few different layouts, and, and they're finalizing some, some potential layouts of what we think, because really what we're trying to do is drill down to what will be the most marketable when we lay things out. What will be the most marketable, what will sell the best, what will be, encourage folks to come and be a part of that, so from that standpoint, we're just working through that, and we plan on coming down with a couple of, of recommendations within the next few weeks, so you guys will be seeing that, of course.
That takes us to Commissioner comments and board reports. Roy, you wanna start?
Oh, I just wanted to mention again about the open house at the ambulance service this morning from ten to noon, celebrating forty years of service to the county.
And unfortunately, I won't be able to be there, we've got, actually, I've got a board meeting today with the Heartland Works Board, so I will report on that next week after I've attended that. That's it, sir.
I haven't been to anything since last week, any outside meetings since last week, but...
Randy?
Was at the Rand Tool City Council meeting Monday night, discussed a lot to do with cleanup and trash and with the county cleanup coming, their cleanup and their dumpsters coming in and so forth, still talking about purchasing a tractor. One of the questions that they came up with was recycling tires and whether or not there's any place that actually will take a tire without penalty or making you pay a fee or not, so, and I know, I know they were trying to locate some of that. They're also working a little bit with their playground about moving equipment away from the road, further away from, from a safety standpoint, and then I think Central Heights must be donating some of their playground equipment, they're gonna transfer it from Central Heights School over to the park there in Rand Tool as well, so, so the things that they have going on in the town.
On that tire thing, Colton didn't, didn't John talk to us one time about looking at a big grinder?
Up grinder.
And I don't know that we ever came to conclusion on that.
Strongly imagine the numbers didn't work out on that one.
Yeah, 'cause we, I know, I remember we ne, we talked about it for a while and then never heard anything back, but, and it was because of the people, you know, wanting to bring tires to, to us and what we would and wouldn't be able to do possibly.
Well, there was one gentleman at the meeting, and I didn't get his name, but he thought he knew a guy who would take them free because that's what they do, they grind them and recycle them, and that he would, 'cause the city's cleaning out a ditch, which apparently there's a lot of tires in that ditch.
Yeah.
So they're gonna have to dispose of them someplace and trying to figure out how to do that, so.
And I also know that during the cleanup, they will clean up, that there is, the city takes some tires, and, and I'm not sure whether they're doing that again this year, but we, they, between them, the city of Ottawa, and the county, we collected a mountain of tires last year, so, and I'm not exactly sure what, if they're doing that again this year or not.
You might talk to the Conservation District, 'cause the, Lee Harris has talked about they had a tire program that they did, I don't know if they're continuing to do that or not, but that's the last couple of years.
Yeah, but they paid a, somebody to haul them away, or what they did with them. I know that a couple of years ago, there was no post-consumer market for them, it was about like glass, if there was, it was pennies, and it was a losing proposition. I mean, recyclables, we know, are down, any commodities down, so there's no way that, I can't imagine you're gonna find anybody taking for free now, let alone two years ago when they could have been worse.
There was, and Jim, I think I put them in contact with you, not that we did anything with it, but there was at least one, if not two vendors at the, at the Fall Conference where they used tires, reclaimed tires for...
Roads.
Roads, and then there were, I think there was another one, they had this brochure of these park benches and things that they made out, out of that, I'm just wondering, I'm just thinking outside the box, if there's people that actually use those to build things, if we amassed them, would they be willing to come and pick them up to use them within their business? I'm just, I don't know.
I recall that people were paying them to take it, though.
Oh, wow. Okay, well, slash that idea, just trying to think, okay.
There's a tire placed down by, in Coffee County on Fifty Highway, and I know they have a company that picks up, 'cause they have bunches of tires, you know, used ones, and there's a company that picks up from them, I can talk to them, see what, what it is, but I think they have to cut the inside of the tire, the, out before the company will take them out, which would amount to a lot of...
The bead, yeah.
...of work, so.
Okay. Anything else? You done? Randy?
I'm done.
Okay, on Monday night, I attended Williamsburg City Council meeting, and actually it was a very short one for Williamsburg. They had a gentleman, Michael Billings was there and presented the letter of conditions for the sewer project. They approved having the lagoons in Luke Copick Field sprayed for weeds by, I believe Asplin's gonna spray it for them, and then they talked about closing an alleyway and approved that, and that was pretty much it. And then yesterday, I attended a RCND Council meeting and had a guest speaker from Leslie Rigney, the Miami County Conservation District Manager, came over and talked to us about some things that Miami County was doing and their conservation programs. Talked about the RC P and P Grant, Don talked about getting ready to take another trip out to, take bikes out to Ellsworth to get worked on. They're getting rid of most of the deer that they had for their Kansas Hunters Feeding the Hungry, there was someone there from Miami County was gonna pick up the last bunch and take it back over there, and then they were finished with the, the deer. Talked about the RCND National Meeting, it was coming up in July, and approved sending Don to it, and talked about the Northeast Kansas Emergency Management. Alan, I guess, went out and was involved in the fire that came up out of Oklahoma, and they're gonna have a, get together and discuss that and ways to get more people involved in, in that kind of thing, and talked about a coordinator position, approved looking to find someone for that position, and that was most of what we done at that meeting. That's all I have. If anyone else have anything, if not, would look for a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Or adjourn?